Call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Craig.
Here.
Vice Chair Miller.
Here.
Director Davens.
Hi.
Director Ray.
Here.
All are present.
Okay, very good. Seeing no members of the public here to comment on anything not on the agenda, we'll move on to item number one of the regular calendar, which is to approve the cancellation of the September the 5th Finance and Administration Committee meeting and approve the scheduling of an alternative meeting date.
So on September 5th, we have a CalCCA meeting down in Monterey. And so we're asking to move that meeting to another date. And I appreciate the feedback to Andrea's student poll. So the two times I have here, both are on September 4th, the day after Labor Day, either 1 to 3 or 2 to 4. Any consensus here on either of those times?
I'd recommend 1 to 3, only because it'll get us out of here before the traffic builds up.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Sounds good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Is that with or without lunch?
With.
1 to 3, yeah.
Show up at 12:30.
Yeah, my only thing is because I'm teaching at that point.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna be right.
So I don't.
Close to 12:30, you said, right?
Yeah, I should be off campus by 12:30. I just have to remember not to get bogged down by students that are coming straight here. So I was hoping there would be food still, so.
Yes.
Same.
So that's.
All okay.
Okay.
So do we have an official maker of the motion in a second?
Oh, yes, can I have a maker?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you.
All right.
To do all in favor, 1 to 3, September.
We've still got to call a question.
Do I have to call a question again? All right, all right, call a question. Okay, all in favor? All right, all right.
Pass.
And now item two.
So we do have a presentation on this one. So this morning, I think, Paul, Paul too. Sure. You should have some handouts as well. Okay. Well, thanks again for coming out here for another important discussion about compensation and benefits. This will be a tag team between Grish and myself. And so just kind of where are we at as far as the roadmap for this project? And so we started this back over a month and a half ago. May 30th, FNA committee, sort of a first draft before the board meeting in June, then had a presentation regarding compensation and benefits and received some payback in June. In the meantime, we went out and hired a consultant, Devon Devine, who has experience with self-directed as myself, as well as Grish. We don't have that, we haven't been part of agencies that have self-directed health plans or how those plans are set up and the tax consequences, etc. So we went out and hired that consultant. Our meeting today to further have a discussion on compensation and benefits. And then we have some, based on the feedback we get today, we'll be bringing this to the board in September for some action items. And then there's a phase two on benefits that we'd like to wrap up in the November, December timeframe to be ready for the next benefits year in 2019. See, is Devon Devine the same one we hired when we first did benefits?
I was just gonna ask.
No, that's. I didn't think so, but it was too long for me to remember what that name was. Yeah, he has a special background. So our agenda today will be, I think first off, we'll be just spend just a few slides talking about the employee survey. Some great comments that we received back from employees and that everyone shipped in with their thoughts. Also then want to move over to the compensation study. We had a second round of that. And pretty good with where those numbers are. We'll discuss what the changes are in the action items. We'll then talk about benefits as far as the phase one and what we can do now, ready for the September board meeting, and then the phase two, which will be near the end of the year. And next steps that we'll discuss as far as what we need to bring to the board in September. So with that, we'll talk about, a little bit about the employee survey, and I'll defer to Grish for some comments as well. The three major things we received out of the survey was, one is changes to benefits, employer and employee qualities, and input on what would it take to make SVC a better place or a great place to work. And I'm gonna let you decipher this one.
So that's great. Everything from the employee survey in terms of a word cloud. And on the left-hand side is the word cloud on what they want a good employer to be. What are the qualities of an employer? And on the right-hand side, qualities of the kind of employee or teammate that someone may want. So, you know, this is not scientific when you do a word cloud. It's more sentiment.
The larger it is, the more.
Yeah, but I use a very, not a great word cloud generator. So it was picking up words like "and" and "the," and some of them you can actually remove all the articles and stuff. So it's a little more prevalent than it should be, but still, I thought, what do they want us to be as an employer? They wanted, I saw a lot of be fair, competitive, growth opportunities, challenging, setting goals, benefits and compensation. There's lots of fair and equitable on that.
Yeah, but since you were asking about that, that accentuates those things in all the research.
Completely, yes. You're exactly right. You're exactly right. And that's what we saw because the framework wasn't benefits and compensation. It was completely focused on that.
Right.
That's a great point. Similarly, on the, well, on the employee side, you know, you can see in some of the small type, it's hardworking, teamwork oriented. The bigger picture was also the kind of employee we want to have or they want is like flexible, collaborative, smart, team-oriented, community-facing.
Nobody said positive and energetic?
I'm sure.
I think it's one of the small words.
Energetics in there, kind of at like 6:00 PM, 6:30 PM, right down there.
Okay.
You want to cover this, or?
Sure. So on benefits, big picture, when you look at the survey results people are talking about, they would like changes and improvements in the current health coverage. And there are some low-hanging fruit that we can actually follow with, which we identified before, and so this was more of just, well, it being emphasized by employees. The other thing that really came across a number of questions was flexibility in work schedules and work-life balance. So there were some suggestions and comments and asks around telecommuting, 980, and then time off for community service, got a lot of thumbs up. And so we have some recommendations around that. So again, employer and employee qualities, what came through was fair and equitable. So number of places we saw things like set goals and update goals. So one of the things we will be coming up with starting October 1 is a performance review process. We're gonna make it completely electronic, so Don and Nick are actually working on creating something that will also allow us to do a variety of performance reviews. So we're gonna start that in October 1. It's perfect timing, given that you approved the strategic plan last month. We will scrape out some of the goals from the strategic plan, put that into your follow-up goal.
One of the things that I think can, not necessarily, but I have known that to be good, is if it's a, what they call a 360 review.
This allows for that, too. Yep. And so we're just gonna be reviewing, over the next three weeks to a month, we're gonna look at various online providers of this service and 360 review, if you want to. Supporting employee growth, health and wellness, and then leader in the CCA movement, one challenging one. Yeah, that goes to challenge your growth, goes back to flexibility and schedules. And however, this is the point, since the survey was around this team, you gotta see a lot of repetition through the six questions that he asked.
And they've all heard all these topics discussed.
Yes.
In board meetings and so.
So setting goals, more communication, you know, we've got some comments around meetings, how effective meetings are, etc. And I think we have a lot of new staff onboard today, they have some new faces, so this is a time maybe for us to revisit some of the ways in which we communicate.
So the second item on our agenda, let's get into the compensation study. Just to give you a background, this is the second go-around on this. We had some holes to fill on the first one. Again, we commissioned Royce Consulting, who's been with us since the start of the agency. So we find the, we expanded and refined the positions that were included in the market pool, as well as the number of participants in that pool. So we have a pretty good range here between cities, CCAs, we have JPA, we have the California Power Agency here in CDA, and then public power as well, SOCOM power. And in the city of Palo Alto, we focused on not just city comparisons, but also specifically the applied utility position within the city. So on the compensation side of it, we looked at this from a max salary for the position. And just to note that no one right now with SVC is at max. We looked, also included in this was deferred compensation. Just as a reminder, we contribute 10% towards gross salary for deferred compensation. Interestingly, Marin and PCE do the same. However, Marin does attach a five-year vesting period. We vest on day one, which is, I think, good for attraction, can be a challenge with retained. So there's a, I think, some comments I've heard in the past, such as maybe we do increasing that contribution based on years of service. You don't have to sign that today, but that might be something.
And that's a difference. This whole thinking you're saving, you're keeping somebody over a 10% contribution that you withheld is, it's so intimidating. Everybody's 401Ks best now write-off. I mean, it's just, I'm actually shocked here with five years.
I was surprised by that one, yeah.
It's, it is like CalPERS, I get you that, right? Or CalPERS and CalSTRS five-year government. But we're much more like a, much less like a public agency.
So we did include for those employers that they pay the employee portion of CalPERS, we included that in this. Peninsula as well as Marin.
So what about the employer portion of CalPERS? You're not including that in the discussion?
Actually, you're right. No, we did include that as well. But any sort of the employee portion as well, that they're paying for. But you're right, the biggest portion is the employer. And then social security, interesting, Peninsula and Marin do partake in social security, we do not. So something to consider that that's six-plus percent, that we're not contributing, so I figure we'll change that in salaries, but that might be a discussion down the road, whether we want to partake in social security or not, as far as creating that annuity. And then any sort of other compensation. Some folks have longevity pay, things like that, car allowances. So if that was included in these positions, we included that as well. We also included in this study, but not part of the compensation piece of it, was a look at benefits, health, dental vision, if there was any sort of retirement health savings account that was being paid for by the employer, as well as other post-employment benefits. In general, we have $1,000 we're putting towards health, dental, vision. It's compared to the other participants in the market, we're about 1,200 below what their average is. So that gives us a gauge for as we go to phase two of creating what that self-directed cap should be, that number will be considered.
If I may, did it have, did it cover just employers or employees, or did it cover employees and family members at all?
Most of them actually included family members, and we're gonna cover that in this presentation.
That's why the numbers are different.
When you said $1,000, is that $1,000 per month, or?
I'm sorry, yes, $1,000 per month.
Okay.
You were thinking, there's a great plan out.
I think Kmart closed, so I don't know where those are.
There's a van that comes by once in a while.
So let's get right into, I divided it up by department to see where an adjustment based on the comp study should be or not be. So in this case, we'll start off with marketing. We mentioned in the proposed budget presentation, we'll be changing the titles of the account rep 1 and 2 to energy consultants, but it won't change the, what we're gonna propose here today, as far as the salary ranges. So where I had the green checkbox, that means we looked at, again, seven participants in the market pool. We looked at it from a 65% percentile of what that average would be, and where do we stand on a max salary, including all those other inputs as well. And if it's a green box, it means that we're recommending no change.
So what does that mean? Does that mean they're currently at 65% or better?
Yes, that's correct. And if they're below that, I pointed out what that recommendation should be. So in this case, with the marketing group, the only recommendation we have right now would be a 4% increase in that max range.
So what that does is it moves it from 61% to 65?
Correct.
Okay, you got it.
Executive administration, so with Grish, it's separate contract negotiations, but Andrea would be recommending a 3% increase?
No, the position would be the range would change.
Correct, you got it.
And then within the range, somebody has the discretion as to what the raises are?
Yes.
And hopefully we're basing raises, some on cost of living, but some on performance? Or do we not have that kind of system?
So that's a great point you're raising here. It needs to be on performance, and so we're gonna do a reset. So soon after the budget gets adopted, we'll do a reset combined with the performance goals. So we set everyone's goals at that point. We'll say, all right, here's where you are. And I would like, it's what Don said earlier, no one's at the max today. And if we go down the path of having a cost of living increase every year, with the compensation serving up every two years, it does make sense, in some cases, to keep someone, let's say, at, close to the bottom of the wage.
If somebody's doing good work.
Yeah.
We need to find out how to move them up the range. And I'm not saying give them one giant raise on one year, but if they're doing good work, they should find themselves near the top of the range, not at the bottom of the range.
Exactly.
And if somebody's at the top of the range and they're not doing good work, somehow over the years, they should end up with smaller ranges, raises, and they, as the ranges move up, they should find themselves declining within the range.
Exactly. That's exactly where we need to go, and those are the kinds of things we're gonna put in place, talking about.
Programs, so director of decarbonization, looked at program directors and other CCAs, and feel that program right now with that range is fine. And then there's two positions that we mentioned are to be determined, we'll bring those to the board in September as part of the budget process. We need to have those will be graded then. Just for the record, I did not bribe Royce Consulting to only adjust my grade. Anyway, but actually, it somewhat makes sense in that IT is a very hot area, and it surprised me. Administrative assistant is actually, when I look at the job description, is also is a support for board clerk. Administrative analyst handling the finances, and then director of finances as well. Finances are a pretty competitive market. Legislative and regulatory, so Hillary's position as manager, we feels right in range. However, the senior regulatory analyst, we just actually made an offer, we'll have that person onboard September 4th. And that would, then, she's agreed to a salary, but then, as you mentioned, director of medical, we'll readjust that based on what the range would be with this increase.
Waiting to see how she performs first.
That's exactly. And then you may remember, we have an associate leg and reg analyst in the table organization. We're proposing to transfer that position to power supply, but we went ahead and graded it anyway, just because this part of the whole vertical broadbending discussion that we had.
Get the data.
Yep. And then in power supply, again, we had pretty good market pool there with NCPA, SOCOM Valley Power, as well as the CCAs, and feel all the positions right now are within range.
So if I may, this brings up kind of another question for me. So these, so I have two separate questions. We've been using 65% for a while now, and I don't think I ever asked the question of why we're using 65%. So I would like to come back to that at some point. And two, so all of these positions would be above 65. So what happens when they get their cost of living and they are performing well, are they gonna keep being above? I mean, it is, our goal is not to have people top up.
Well, this.
I am asking the question.
Is our goal.
It is, is our goal to have people top up.
It's basically, the goal is to pay a competitive wage.
Yes.
Without having this kind of, a seat, an artificial ceiling. So as long as we are updating our compensation survey every two years and having a COLA put in every year, I think that's dynamic enough. That's gonna move.
Okay, so just say that one of these positions is at 85%.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Of the range.
Of the range.
Right, yep.
Is it, do we intend on keeping that position at 85% of the range, growing to 90 to 95? Or, so I guess what I'm saying is, I'm.
Let me ask, let me ask a question more directly. If the guy's really good, does he eventually get to 100% of his range?
Yes, yes.
And then what happens?
The range keeps moving. He'll stay at his.
The range moves based on the market pool, but that, if he's really good, he could stay at the top of the range.
Yes.
Right, so just say.
He she.
He she. Just say she's at 100 units. And the next year, we do a compensation survey, and we say 110 is the number.
Yeah.
So now the range goes to 110.
Right.
At the end of the year, that's gonna be a decision that the supervisor makes occasionally.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Yep.
So that there isn't an expectation that they automatically go to the top of the range.
No.
It's not like the city thing. That's why I kept saying the performance side of it.
Yeah, yeah.
8%.
Well, since there is the labor union, it's easy to do it on performance. Cities are different, because we start with labor unions.
No, we got union contracts with performance-based rate increases in our city. And you know what happened to it? The council refused to fund it. They were like, well, what do you mean, we might have to pay more money if the employees all exceed their goals?
That's stupid.
And so it all imploded on the council side, but we actually got with our unions performance-based contract. That was two years ago. But the city failed.
Yeah.
They prefer to sit there and go, we know what the COLA is, so we can budget that. Anyway, sorry.
So I mean, how does this has to do with the classic pyramid scheme of this, which we've talked about?
So I would say pyramid scheme is more of a pejorative way of talking about this.
But it's a problem at the city level.
At the city level, it may be a problem. This is, I would say, we are being competitive and flexible and responsive to market in a very tight labor market and a very expensive region.
Just asking.
The reality right now is so much that way. We get a giant deep recession, the ranges won't move at all. And you will have, will be some hard choices to say, you're not at the maximum of your range, but you're not performing very well, so we're not moving you towards the maximum of your range, even though the range is not moving. When everything's growing, this is easy to administer. When the economy slows down, it gets harder, because harder choices have to be made.
To me, this is the other piece, also working with all of you as board members, you've come from a place of labor being 60 to 80% of your budget with defined benefit programs, and it's very much hardwired. We are 2% or less. We actually have flexibility, so that's one. The other is the risk is very asymmetric for us. Losing a person, as you've had experience with, things just slow down quite a bit. And I think that's where it gets to the point that how it brought up too, and what you're talking about, where do we want people within the range? My public sector backdrop too, and I'd like, oh, once you get someone in, they're limited to three to five percent increases. And it just.
It's more based on inflation than it is on performance.
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah.
Right. And so since we have the flexibility, and you have flexibility both ways, if things go sideways with the PCIA or other market changes, we'll be back, you'll be making the cuts.
So I think this discussion is useful because, you know, you've got the whole board to deal with. And supervisor Cortez has not been involved in these discussions much at all, and he's the one that has been asking me questions about finance. So just FYI.
Yeah, I look at some of the positions, they're very specific around the power supply one, but then I look at like the IT one, right? If this guy is really good, why would he not be at Apple or Google or at Com and all of that? And so, so we really can't languish on some of these positions, or we're just gonna end up with mediocre people.
Yeah, and none of us disagree with that. We're just trying to find a way to, I'm not gonna phrase it crudely, impalatable. We want to make sure that when we talk about this stuff publicly.
Yeah, and I was hoping that, I know we worry about the numbers, and I'm glad to see a lot of green checkboxes. You didn't answer the second question, but I'm gonna come back, because I didn't forget your question, Liz, because I want to hear it. Right, it's the total package. You're here for this total job. We're changing the world, we are doing something important, and we have some randomly weird benefits that are unique and special, and we pay you fairly. There's this whole package.
Yes, right.
Now, this is only one part of it. Now, the question that was asked by, that I want to know too, 65 to get you a green, how many of them are like 90 and 80 and, how many are way over? There was no measure of how far off any of them were.
There was no one that was over 100% compared to the market pool, but we had some that were at 70 to 85.
So what's, yeah, so when we talk about adjusting the ranges every two years.
Yes.
So let's say we've got one that's at 75%.
Right.
Does it not move in these two years?
That's right.
And we eventually let the 65 catch up?
That's it.
Thank you for asking my question.
You catch up.
That was a question.
Well, we got distracted, and I didn't want to lose.
You have a couple COLAs in between that next comp sniff.
But I'm assuming there's also opportunities for promotions to different category levels, which gives you an increase that's different than moving in with one range.
We're not doing that too much, are we?
There's just, you're correct, but you just don't have that many opportunities. But that's another opportunity. Here's the.
It was on the list of what people want, and develop people being developed.
Here's the other thing. So this is a bigger piece that we're doing. Vertical broadbending, so just say someone is a regulatory analyst, we hire them for, that's a box. We're also gonna create a box, senior regulatory analyst and associate regulatory.
See, that's, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
So you can move up. Yep, so that, that's, so we would actually get the data for those positions, too, at 65% on, and you could promote that.
Some of them you get stuck on, right? Because the job's the job. And what we did in our city, and we're a really small city, and we lose people to Los Gatos all the time, and Campbell, because we only have like three planner positions.
Wait a minute, you stole our planners.
We wanted to give him back. So like, think of our people who do the groundskeeping, right? There's only one supervisor in the grounds thing, you know, and that guy, until he retires, so what do you do for those people? We actually added unusual job responsibilities. We give them job challenge. So like, people who mow the lawn at our baseball field also manage the contractors who work out there, who cut the sod, who do the irrigation.
But, you know, when you look across, you don't see that many opportunities, because we're a small organization.
That's the same.
But in reality, look what's happened. Shoot, I just got.
Hillary?
Hillary got a promotion, right? And we gave Dennis a promotion, left anyway, he got a promotion. Don has gotten a promotion, I think. This Don got department.
Yeah, but this is.
Is made bigger, so, you know, we've only been existence two years, and look at all of the upward mobility that's occurring.
But you would expect that in the beginning. Go out five years, when we've got the whole work chart filled in, and the only positions we're adding are.
In a stagnant labor market, yes, but you may have people, you know, what if Don leaves and becomes CEO at some other.
Right, but so I agree with the strategy of having the three job categories per thing, so there's a place. But eventually, everybody's either on the top, or the organization's constantly reforming as we take different initiatives and direction on, and that gives people different opportunities. But I don't think you're gonna start as, you know, an analyst and have some clearly defined career path to be the finance director, because there's just so few, few of those jobs within our organization. Not saying that somebody couldn't do that, but if it's somebody, it's only one. I think we all agree. We know this, this state of our thing. We think, I think, I don't want to speak for real, but I think your plan of having multiple opportunities within a job is a good one, and that mitigates it somewhat, but we're never gonna be a San Jose where there's 87 people for. people for every job title at different grades and degrees.
Yep.
Or Los Gatos, or yeah. Or Montecristo, no, never mind.
So though we are hitting a couple of places, the bigger picture, and maybe we'll talk about this at the board level, so, you know, what do employees want? So there's work, the quality of, okay, we, most of us have come here because there's a passion, there's a mission, meaning, and the, so challenging the work. So what do we do to add more interesting work? This culture, creating the environment, so that becomes the goodwill, you know, whether small little things, like the picnic we're doing this Friday. So cultures, benefits and compensation, and then space and tools. And the fact that we're expanding into those two suites tools. So I think we're hitting all those things that create, making this a great place to work.
So the salary, there's like a vision of salary, and our, our vision of salary is to be competitive and be fair.
Yes.
And fair can be interpreted in many ways.
Yes.
Fair to the employees, fair to the ratepayers.
Correct.
Fair to us, public servants who have to explain it in the context of our city jobs.
And that's why we picked sixty-five percentile, I think previously when we've talked about this, it was actually a median of fifty.
It was median.
Median, I'll tell you, this was, I'm used to seeing sixty-five fifth percent on, I used this in Riverside and Alameda.
And sixty-five doesn't mean fifteen percent more, it means sixty-five of the bell curve and the croissants that we get.
Right, and it's seven, you know, we had, seven is a market basket, it's pretty good. So, I think, not that it's too far off.
So again, I think, um, the world of employees is very, very different, even than it was five years ago.
Yeah.
And the generation, and the generation of people looking for work is also incredibly frightening.
Are you saying we're getting old?
Speak for yourself.
Yeah, you're gonna see.
I'm I'm saying I have to constantly be flexible in my mindset.
You're gonna see some of that being keyed up, you're all gonna be stretched.
Do we, did we beat the compensation questions to the ground? Is there anything else you needed for us to discuss on compensation?
So our recommendation is, we'll come back to you at the September fourth meeting, if there's any material adjustments to the, to the study results we showed you today. For positions that are below market, like to, through the budget process, have a resolution to adjust those maximum salary ranges. And then.
Please be clear when you say that, you're adjusting the ranges but not the actual salaries?
Correct, and that's.
The actual salaries will be adjusted as appropriate to a totally different process.
That's an internal. Yeah, right, through the performance.
This is the ranges we're talking about.
Very important point.
Yeah, because otherwise, people are gonna see that slide and go, no, you're gonna give fifteen percent raise, well, you're getting eleven percent raise.
And, and then we'll look at the Director of Accounts and Programs positions in the next year, because those didn't move, and a few other Director positions did. So we just wanna make sure we have some fairness in there. And so anyway, that's the end for the compensation study piece of it. One other point I'd like to talk about compensation would be COLAs, is something we've already mentioned. So we do, we are proposing, we touched on this in the past, but we would like to bring it to September board, we need a policy codifying the, the COLA annual basis. Marin actually does this, and we would have it index-based, whatever, there's a CPI for urban area, for Bay Area, probably is what we can pick. Cap it at four percent, and the adjustment would be effective October first, and then it can be suspended based on the condition of the agency. Having said that, is there consensus here of, let's say it's four percent? So I'd be three and one, performance and versus.
Yeah, I'm confused, so you tell me, if we're talking about, you know, Joe generic employee, I want, because we know too many of them, I don't wanna pick one. But Joe generic employee who's doing what's expected of them, but only what's expected of them. Do they get COLA plus performance? Do they get, and and I wanna do generic employee who's not doing what we need of them, do they get COLA? And we have Joe employee who's hitting it out of the park and is super critical to us, do they? How does this work when we're talking about performance?
Well, from the, maybe what your cities have and where I'm used to, is that you have a COLA that's, let's say, three percent, that everybody gives across the board. And then the merit part of it that you're talking about, it'd be handled through that performance or paper performance process.
So the worst employee will always get COLA?
I'm looking, that's the background I'm used to, but I'm kinda looking for some feedback on for you folks.
I'm trying, because you're only showing this one slide, but it's, it's not just COLA that we're gonna give people, it's COLA plus a performance thing. That's our thing, and I'm just trying to understand how that would work in reality.
So tagging on to that, you gave the example of the three situation. The employee who's doing okay but not really doing the job. The employee that's doing the job but nothing more.
Not much more.
And then there's the one that's doing it out of the park. So the one doing it out of the park is easy, they get the COLA plus the performance.
And the manager has some set of guidelines that you'll come up with and say, here's how we compensate.
But but look at the reality of that.
If I, if I may finish, yeah, sorry. The second one is someone who's just doing the job, so they would just get the COLA.
I was asking sort of that question.
I I I'm.
Keep going.
Filling, filling in for you this time. But the person who isn't doing well, then the supervisor has the decision. I think it's difficult to, if you have a policy of COLA, you have to give everyone the COLA, but the, but the supervisor has to let the person know that they are not performing up to stuff, and that their job is at risk. Because unfortunately, they're gonna be rewarded the same way as the person who's done the job okay.
Well, that was my question.
So, you're not gonna, you know, if you think about, if you do, everybody gets COLA and then you get merit, that means we're always growing our salary above the cost of living.
COLA plus, yes.
And is that really what we wanna be doing, that could be limiting? And and I think in, when I was in the private company world, there was, you know, usually it was the average, basically, across the board, the average was some amount, and maybe it was, you know, the cost of living or or something, and you either got above or below, but the company average was that amount. I'm a little bit worried about saying everybody gets COLA, and then we're putting, you know, the, an additional performance on top of it, because that means we're always growing faster than than cost of living.
COLA is.
Do we wanna do that?
COLA is an awkward one too, I get it in the municipal sense.
Yes.
But in in private sector, HP was brutal, they said, look, this has nothing to do with the cost of living. This has to do with what it costs us to hire for your position. So it was all based on the market measures, and if the market measures didn't go up at all, there wasn't a cost of living.
So does that?
It wasn't, wasn't based on, the, the salary stuff that you got and the raises wasn't based on CPI, which is very city. It was all based on market measure, which is more the, the ranges.
So let me try and have something, kind of trying to get the essence of what you're talking about. What if we think about performance pay, right, so merit pay? We'll have some kind of internal kind of guideline about what a three, just say on a scale of one to five on employee performance rating, where three is just generic Joe doing generic work, and five is great, one is not so great. If we target the threes to get the COLA.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that's not salary kind of increasing, whereas the fives would be COLA plus something else.
That's still within the range.
That's, of course, still within the range, but that would be at the manager's discretion. And if you're at one, you may get zero.
It may be ineligible.
So you can't have a COLA policy?
No, there's no COLA policy, it's more of maybe this is just feedback for us, or internal guidelines, because I think that would come under my authority.
And then one other slight wrinkle in that that I want you to consider. If you have a guy who's paid at the bottom of the rate range, the pay range, but is doing the best work in the whole organization, and you have another guy who's doing equal best work in the organization, but he's at ninety-nine percent of the range, right? The guy who's.
He's gonna get a much higher percentage.
The farther you are away from where you should be being paid, the bigger your raise should be.
Yes, yep.
Not that they would pass each other, but.
It's some mathematical formula of how far you are from median.
Exactly.
And if you're above median, you may, you may get a smaller amount, but then you're also multiplying by your.
Performance.
Performance, right?
Percentage, yeah.
Yeah, if you're, if you're well below and you're doing really good, you're good, then the two are gonna multiply to a bigger one. If you're already at the top, but you're doing really well, you're, it's gonna drag down how much extra you get.
We poached a lot of companies that didn't understand that. And so you'd have young guys who are super good, they were getting these modest raises, even though they were being told they were doing super good, because they, they weren't moved up fast enough.
Yeah, yeah, that's very true. So I think Rob answered the second half of where I was thinking, which is, in a lot of the big companies I worked in, the corporation had an annual maximum increase of, I'm just gonna say, four percent. And everybody's raise had, was forced to fit mathematically into that four percent.
They had a salary budget increase of four percent.
They had, thank you, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what you do, if I followed your point correctly, that's what you do if you don't want your salaries to be increasing faster than you would like them to.
When I had a department of thirteen, I was given, okay, your average is three percent. You can give some four, you can give some two percent, you know, but it had to equal out. And you were encouraged to not just give them all the middle, which is what you wanna do, because you don't wanna have to give some people worse, but then you gotta reward others.
Right, right, so how, what are, what are you thinking?
So here's what I'm thinking at this point. I think we budget at max, so we have, that gives us the maximum flexibility.
That's what our city always does, we budget at max, and we always come up.
So you budget at max.
Which, which we've been doing.
Yeah, which we've been doing.
Yeah.
Within the range, I'm going to get a COLA as a guideline myself. So when we sit down as a leadership group, the directors, and by the way, so even performance appraisals are gonna be calibrated with the directors. So before we actually sit down with employees to go through rankings, we are going to share our proposed rankings, because there's gonna be a lot of multiple hands due, and so we wanna make sure that the rankings are provided properly. I'm thinking it's someone who is doing average work, say like a three, they're gonna get a COLA. That's basically saying.
You're not gonna call it.
I'm not gonna call it COLA, that's my guideline.
Right.
Saying that's like a full percent.
So if they're at the bottom of the range and they're doing the minimum, the required work, they got a three, but but they're not in the middle of the range yet. By Rob's formula, they should get more than COLA. If they're on the range and they're getting a three and they're way above the median, they should get less than COLA, right?
Yeah.
So you're, you're trying to.
Balance it out.
Their performance is, is like a target of where they should land in their range ultimately.
Mm-hmm.
And so if you're doing a three and you're at the top of the range, you're doing the three and you're at the bottom of the range.
You may get a different percentage.
You know, they both have to tend towards where they're, they're gonna land.
Correct, because we.
Okay.
Our intention is we wanna retain both employees.
Right.
And so the employee who stays at the bottom of the range, because for whatever reason.
They're brand new, they're just on the job.
They came in low.
They're brand new, they came in, and they've shown to be great. We don't want to limit them to just.
They're stuck there for.
Stuck there for like four percent for a year, they'll never catch up, they're just gonna go somewhere else.
Right.
So I think that's gonna be some flexibility that I would want to reserve for our managers.
The question that that Rob had to, which is, as the directors.
Yeah.
How do we give you the, how much we want our salary base to grow in a year?
Isn't that provided by the comp survey?
Well.
So the comp survey basically tells us that, so over here.
So actually.
No, no, let me, I will counter that point.
Yeah.
The comp survey tells us kind of what the market measures are.
Yep.
But we're not at the market measure, we're at some different point in the continuum.
We're below it, we're below it.
Yep, in some cases.
And, yeah, whatever it is on average, right? The question that we, that we as the directors have, are we increasing our salary budget by ten percent so that you can rapidly get to that control point? Or are we increasing the overall salary budget by COLA plus one percent so you can slowly eke up to that position? What's that control point? What, rephrase it, what is the, what is the control point that you expect to give to the board on salary, uh, total salary cost? Because that's probably what we were supposed to somehow manage.
Right, even though we're budgeting.
And then you manage all the stuff inside and how you're gonna do it.
Yes, yes.
What, what is the knob you wanna give us, and how do we wanna define that knob?
So let me add to, I'm sure I'm getting what you're saying fully.
Is it maybe a percentage of revenues?
No, no, I'm sorry.
No, no, yeah.
You can use, you could say, our average payroll's gonna go up by the CPI this year. Or you could say, our average payroll's gonna go up by what the market survey says it should go up. And then that's what the board votes on, and then you go and you decide who, who gets more and who gets less of that.
So in this case, let me just.
No, so let me, let me rephrase it, because if you said, how much the salary surveys went up, we're in a down year, the salary surveys goes up none.
Yes.
So you're saying that what we're gonna tell you is, we want the salaries to go up none.
No, no.
So you don't want it to be that, you don't want it to be that.
I think all that the board is, what I'm asking of the board of directors, is just set the salary budget, the labor budget.
So this is the difference.
That's it, and the labor budget is set on the max salary. So just say, based on that, today's, this year's budget was five million bucks. When we make these changes, eleven percent for this position, one percent for this position, seven percent for this, he's gonna come back and he's gonna say, it's now five point three five million.
But we know we'll never be anywhere near that.
Right, that's all I'm asking you to improve.
So so that, that's the, that is the distinction that I, I'm hearing us get at, is that we have, we are managing our employee costs, our salary budget, by a budget maximum, COLA range that is, is annual, annualized or bi-annualized, whatever.
Right.
But we are authorizing.
Correct.
Gresh to manage under that.
Within that. So that's what I'm asking for. I'll give you, I'll tell you that in some past employees I've worked with, what we've done is, we do this step, and then we assume a vacancy rate. Because we know, even if we have folk, just say we had twenty five, if you authorize additional folk positions, it's gonna take a few months for those folks to come in. So we, we basically, here's a vacancy rate, six percent, something like that, we apply to the salary budget. So now it's at five million with, even five point three five.
Go back to five point one.
That's correct, that's the expected amount we would pay.
So I mean, it is, again, it is a new, it's a different way of thinking. Instead of, probably not the best analogy, but instead of saying that we have a four percent COLA that you, or four percent amount you have to manage within, he has to manage under the maximum.
Correct.
Yes, so I think that this slide doesn't exist.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Because this is data that you're gonna want, and you're, because you'll have a compensation committee internally, and you'll go through, CPI this last year was two percent, so we should try and make sure that everybody gets at least two percent, unless, unless they're a one, at which point we.
You're average. It's a different.
You'll figure, you'll figure out all those details.
Yeah.
So that, that's my best understanding.
Yes, and this is, I think, very similar to how cities do it, and the cities, tell, tell the city manager what to provide each employee.
Here's, here's what we do at my city, is, is we do the ranges just like this.
Yeah.
And we budget the maximum, and then the, the system is actually extremely well-defined underneath, but it's the step system based on.
That's right, there's a step system.
Right, and it's based on yours of service.
Correct.
Which is the weird part, because there should be a performance thing in there, but there's not.
There's not.
And that's just because we have, we're a seven-step city, because we have two longevity steps.
Yes.
And, and we have, we have mandatory stepping every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I know, so that's the weirdness, but, but the base part of, the salary surveys happen, and we actually budget it maximum, knowing that we're never gonna spend that. And then the rest of the system is actually well-known to the council members, the step systems, and we may have our issues with it.
Right.
In this case, this system may not be as well-defined, but you probably wanna say, here are the parameters that are gonna be factored in when we decide on what somebody's raise.
I agree.
Because we don't want it to be as, I, I shouldn't say, I don't want it to be a rigorous step system. COLA was four percent, you've been here for three years, so you'd get four point six.
Yeah, that's, I don't think we're there yet. And I think in terms of our culture, what you wanna promote, what I wanna promote, I think we wanna go with approve the salary, and then I think these are just guidelines that I could say, this is what I'm gonna be doing.
Here are the factors that we.
Here are the factors that we as a leadership. Here are the factors that we as a leadership.
You need to be prepared to have an outline of a process and factors.
Yeah, I, you know, when you say a three, I just, I wanna give you a slightly personal opinion, it's totally. I do not wanna end up in an organization where half of the employees do not get a cost of living increase and half get something better. Because I think that creates a terrible work environment. I think you want it to be an outlier.
Correct.
That's not getting a cost of living increase, because there's an actual performance problem. And then the second thing is you do your ratings and you say all the directors are gonna compare. This was the flawed HP system, they did normal distribution even on very small teams. And that meant in any given team or any given.
They had too much money.
They had to be. You couldn't have two top performers. So if you ever did, that meant that they had to separate. You had to move them to different teams, or they couldn't be.
Cause you take my. That you had to have a bottom performer, that's what I was trying to make.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna get caught in both spaces. If you have two people that are both doing great jobs, we should, we should value them for that.
So this is more for communications between the directors, just to make sure that we're on the same page.
And, and on the.
It's not gonna be formulate, it's not gonna be the, what they say, rank and yank.
Yeah, but on the, the very bottom side.
Yeah.
If, if, if everybody's doing what we need them to do.
You may have a bunch of fours and fives.
I don't wanna say that you have to have two ones, four twos.
See, this is where.
Eight threes.
This is where I think what I'm asking for is actually flexibility. And I think this is something that should come under my discretion on how it gets implemented.
But this is, i- is really a good example of what you do not want to have happen. This is why you're approaching, one of the reasons you're approaching it the way you are.
It definitely needs to be your discretion, I think the board wants confidence that you've got a, a good process that will retain employees.
And you take into account everybody's random little factor.
Yep. So I think when we come back to you in September, the F and A committee, we will add some factors, so I can talk to you a little bit more about how we'll plan on.
One of your little factors may be cost of living someplace.
Yes.
But it's not a, it's not a linear, it's not a minimum, it's not a guarantee, you just have to say that.
This was a good discussion.
Appreciate the feedback. Okay. Okay, so we'll move out of the compensation and get more into the benefits. So we're looking at a phase one, phase two approach. And here we're looking at some improvements we wanna make to, to the current healthcare coverage we have. So as you mentioned, we have a thousand dollars per month. It's limited to employee only, we'd like to make some changes to include vision with the family, but we still wanna cap it at a thousand dollars per month until we get to the phase two discussion. We'll talk about time off. I think the performance reviews is a internal discussion, but we'll, we'll bring you updated in the September meeting. And then other internal improvements such as communications and environment, developing the cultures is.
Did we already approve changes to time off?
No.
But it's been discussed, the week at Christmas.
Yes, you're gonna see that.
Okay, and then the second question on this slide, just cause I'm sensitive to, it's July and I see February up there, I just. Sooner it's better than later, January first is the beginning of the tax year for all the employees.
I said February, cause that's our benefits plan here. But if we can wrap this, this phase two up, I remember sooner it's better.
But I think of like, if we got the, the health savings accounts, or we got the, the section one twenty-five, the dependent care account, or, or any of those things done.
By January.
January first would be the appropriate time to turn all those things on.
That's correct.
So that, so that everybody could have them for the calendar year, or the, their tax year, which is the calendar year.
Just out of curiosity, why is our benefits February one year?
Based on the timing of when we first initiated benefits, it happened to be that, uh, we brought it, I think, to the board December or two thousand sixteen. It was just the timing.
So does it ever get adjusted back?
We can't, there, there's no science to that.
So whatever, okay, yeah, all right.
And we may end up doing that through the first.
I, I'm inclined, so the reason you don't wanna increase, because I do think with a thousand dollars a month, we knew, we were penny pinching in the beginning, we really were, we knew.
We were spending cities money at that point, we had no revenue, we knew it, we had to be tight.
Yeah, I mean, we, I had no qualms about justifying why we did what we did, cause that's where.
But we knew we were gonna fix it.
We knew we were gonna fix it. And the reason we can't increase the health, uh, coverage, uh, amount now is because it's not in the budget.
Uh, we, I think it's cause we're still in the current, I think we wanna make that part of the phase two rather than. So we wanna expand, a lot of folks are really not using even half of that thousand dollars right now, because it's limited to employee only. So we wanna at least.
They're mostly very young.
We do it, and we have others that are, are over it. So we wanna at least be able to, uh, expand that to, so they can use as much of the.
Make it more flexible right away.
Correct.
To budget.
And then increase the amount.
Okay, that's, so that's, I think, an important discussion point.
Yeah.
You know, just simply saying, we, we, we are saying this because some are, some aren't. The flexibility this allows at this point makes it more universally consumed, if you will, the thousand becomes.
You can only dangle the carrot in front of the mule for so long, right? It's, my fear is that we started this in May and February first. But it would be nice to be done and wrapped up as soon as we possibly can be, even if certain things don't take effect.
Right.
Until a specific date. Because then at least we're out of the discussion.
Right.
The carrot's not being dangled anymore, the carrot is there, it's a given, you know you're getting it.
Yeah, but at least it gives us some movement to your point.
Yeah, okay.
So let's talk a little bit about, so we, we mentioned this, we wanna at least make some adjustments starting September to maximize the thousand dollars a month. Talked about all this vision dental, and actually no fiscal impact as long as we're.
The part is, yeah.
Time off, uh, this was also mentioned quite a bit on the survey, whether it's flexible schedules or increased time off. So we mentioned this at the June board meeting, as far as a week off between Christmas and New Year's. We would bring back to the board then, uh, a change in benefits to make that week between Christmas and New Year's paid holidays. And we'd like to do this on a trial period two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, and then come back to the board in nineteen to see if it worked and see if we renew it.
Really? So seeing this with, I think, M C of Sonoma, this is the way they've done it, where the board actually takes action and says, we're gonna take these particular days off. This, what we are proposing is due for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So you've actually taken a, again, it preserves flexibility. It.
I got you.
Yeah.
It just seems pretty, we don't have that much vacation anyway, it seems pretty chicken shit for three days.
We are going to add to that.
Yeah.
So there's, there's more that we're going to ask for.
No, but you get Christmas and you get New Year's, and one of them's guaranteed to fall in a week, right? So this could be four.
Yeah, so about four days, I think for the next two years, it allows for people to plan. So if you're okay with this, we'll bring it in in September and say, the December Christmas break, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen allows people to plan. Uh, and for the twenty twenty year, we, we'll bring it in again, like.
Well, well before this.
Well before that, twenty nineteen. There is going to be, you're right, we have been, uh, chintzy on P T L. So there's some other things that we're gonna ask for, including this, this was some good feedback we got from employees to.
I just worry that it's trial period, what are we trying, why wouldn't we make it permanent?
I don't think you'd get any pushback from making the December, Christmas to New Year's a regular thing.
Just add it to the holiday list.
Yeah.
Rob, what do you think?
There are other things I think the board's probably gonna wanna say, let's try it for a little while, let's preserve flexibility. This one just seems more like a gimme, I don't know. Are you guys open during Christmas, Los Gatos?
We have some shutdown days in there, actually, yes.
Yeah.
They shut down non-paid.
That's why we always skip the first Tuesday in January for council meetings, the staff has been on.
Yeah, we skip the first, the first, cause we would be the first Wednesday, and there's just no way that, you know.
Staff wouldn't be able to prepare to thing that.
Are they paid holidays? Ours used to not be paid holidays, and we went through our last contract negotiation, I think we paid for most of them.
I'm not, I don't know.
We used to not pay and then it kind of evolved.
They can use their own time off to, to afford, but the city does not pay.
Yeah, we moved to a pay.
This is a little bit of balancing, and you'll see some additional things that we are asking for.
You wanna just go to the next slide? Yeah, sit down and maybe look through them all.
Yeah.
So we're also looking to recommend forty hours of management leave, um, for this point, roll it out for the exempt employees. Would not count towards, uh, your accrued P T O, but essentially with that week off at Christmas, a management leave week, that's a fifty percent increase than, than what we currently have.
This is like in the cities, they call it like admin leave.
Yeah, that's right.
For, for when, they have to be on Saturday in Sacramento to do whatever. You don't have to sit around and try and keep comp time check sheets somewhere.
It's just perfect, yeah, it's good. And then also, we'd like to, uh, develop a policy to authorize Girish to provide up to eighty hours of unpaid leave for employee.
That's perfect.
Yeah, right now, we looked at this, I don't have the authority to provide unpaid leave to anyone.
Emergencies happen.
And so this is just a way of allowing me that authority. And we found that by trying to hire people too, some people really value unpaid time offs. They, they want time off.
Yeah.
More than salary.
Yeah.
And then as we were looking at this, I was actually trying to negotiate with them on unpaid time off.
Eighty hours, my, my, the squint was eighty hours seemed, I'm trying to think under what circumstances this would apply. And I could see a lot of little circumstances where a couple days here or there is gonna make a big difference for somebody.
Well, if you have an ill child or an ill parent.
Yeah, but then I'm starting to think eighty hours is really only two weeks. If I go to, have to go to Milwaukee, cause my dad's got cancer, and I've gotta meet with doctors, I'll be there for surgery. I guess I fall under family leave then.
Yes, yes.
I think the big one is, I've just booked a two-week trip, I've decided I wanna start working here and I haven't accrued any vacation by then, right? So I tell Girish, well, I'll come over, but I gotta have these two weeks off in, in September for my trip. You know, I'll take them unpaid, and he can't even say yes now, right?
Yeah, my issue was only, is eighty too few, but eighty's fine, eighty's fine.
Eighty's fine.
Cause I think most of the examples I come up with are already covered under federal law anyway.
Yeah, you have family law.
So we'd be looking at this, we thought, okay, this is two weeks, for kind of emergencies, it's almost like insurance.
But it's giving you flexibility.
For the employees. So that this, the forty hours management leave, the day off, the week off of Christmas, plus the four weeks, this starts to get pretty good. And you just, from a competitive standpoint, you look at the other C C As, we start to look kind of one of the better ones, less than the cities, but better than most of the C C As.
Be good with that, riddle me this on the time. Can, can mom go with the kid to the art day at kindergarten and come in at ten o'clock two days a week for a quarter? Or can dad coach baseball?
Yeah.
Where he has to leave at three o'clock in the afternoon two days a week?
Go back one slide. Okay, no, no, go one more, sorry, further up, sorry, you're going the other direction.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Uh, answer to that is not yet. I'll tell you what, we got a lot of feedback from my employees wanting nine eighties. And I think the, the idea was more of what you're talking about, which is, I want flexibility and work-life balance. And, but the way in which it got articulated was, and therefore I want nine eighties.
Cause they all heard nine eighties talked about more than one.
And many have actually experienced, taken it, and it's been great, I've had it for years, and when I've had it, I was like, oh, this is fantastic. So that's something we'd like to address in phase two. I think telecommuting policy, if you do wanna be a twenty-first century organization, you need to create some kind of telecommuting policy.
I have trouble with that.
I have trouble with that myself, that's why I said we've got, all gotta have to stretch to see what's possible.
And I don't know any place that the nine eighty has worked.
So, no, I had trouble with, you're within nine eighty?
Yeah.
But I think the point that I was bringing up.
It's not eighty hours and nine days, is that correct?
Yeah, mine is a different point, mine is like, look, if, if, if I need to work from ten till eight, two days a week for, for twelve weeks, can somebody do that? Or can I work from, from nine to three, go coach my kid's baseball team, and then work from home from seven to ten?
So that's something that's train, that's awareness, training for all of us, the directors, but we are management employees and we have this flexibility. How do you actually promote this flexibility for all the employees?
All employees, yes.
For all the employees, because we have it, let's use that option, the flexibility we have.
So, so you're going to need perhaps to, to write it, not so much, I don't know, it's a formulating thing, much more as a discretionary thing.
Correct, it's more procedural, you know, we're so bandied about ideas like, it's almost like summer schedules, you know? So it needs to be done on a kind of planned basis, it can't be ad hoc. I think that's what.
So the way Apple made telecommuting work was, that was the original FaceTime implementation. So if they were working from home, you would see on your screen that they were home, you'd type in your message and you'd see them in ten seconds. Oh, hi, I'm here at my computer working, not on the golf course. And that instant communication thing is great, the downside to it is it started going twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there needs to be.
If you're gonna be telecommuting, you have to be online and available, you can't be quote telecommuting, that's the flaw.
Well, you know what, I think as you have been an employee for, I should, how do I say this? When you're young and, and new to the work world, you don't have the same discipline. And I, you know, I'm thinking, I as a supervisor, this should be more a, a privilege than a, um, whatever the opposite of a privilege is.
Right.
Oh, right.
Right, because it, as a supervisor, if I know I have employees that can be disciplined and get the work done, even if they're at the computer, but what if they've got their kids at home? And they're chasing their kids around the house most of the three hours, even though sure, they're there when you call them, but really, you know, they're spending more time chasing kids than working.
They have to get the work done. The issue that we had was, we had telecommuters, they were telecommuting, but you lost all the collaboration element, cause they weren't available. That's the part that was solved. But you're right, if the performance isn't there, doesn't matter if they're online.
Everybody is not gonna be able to self-discipline, I guarantee you.
Nope.
And, and as a supervisor, you need to be able to back off letting them do that if you realize they're not getting the work done. It, it can't be a right.
Yep.
So however you approach those things, think of it more as, um, we might wanna set a maximum, I don't know, but it needs to be more supervisory, rather only controlled than a right.
There are two elements, there's their performance, what they do. And then there's their impact on the organization, which is sort of the collaborative, whatever role.
Right.
And so by having somebody being away, you have the potential of losing some of both. And somehow you have to manage.
Right, and I, I, I couldn't agree with you more, and there's a lot of jobs here, I think, I understand vaguely, that really require the collaboration and the connectivity and, you know, can you fix, tell me about that account, or can you tell me how are we doing? You know, it's really much more of the leaning over the fence role.
Yes, which also gets to space planning, which we'll talk about later, how space planning can evolve.
I keep meaning to send you that, I haven't.
Yeah, so this is a T B D, because of these issues, we're not comfortable enough to.
No, no, back up, I'm pretty comfortable with everything that you've already mentioned on these slides.
Yeah, okay.
Some of these policy things we're just giving you feedback on, like, why wouldn't we move forward now to give you the authority to, to do like eighty hours of, of unpaid leave?
So if you're.
That seems like a flexibility issue.
We'll bring it, September twelfth, we'll bring it in for adoption, by the way.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, the fact that we've given you a lot of feedback, I don't think we're under.
So far, everything that I've heard in terms of our recommendation you've given us comes up. We'll bring it all back as recommendations September twelfth.
And I'll even begrudgingly eat if you're only doing the two years. I just hate to have things that always have to come back to the board, that are always going to be approved, it just starts to seem like false business.
Not for us, there's a little, maybe a little bit of method to this madness, because if you're gonna come up with phase two.
Yeah.
With other benefits, these things could all be additive, and I think you wanna have the ability to make sure that the whole package is okay.
When we started, we were spending cities monies, and we had to do the minimum necessary to start the organization. And we said after we got to, to operations, which, when do you say we've actually made it? I say we've done a year now, so I think we've passed the threshold of actually.
And we got reserves.
Yeah, now is when we said we would fix these things. And, and I didn't think of it as like, oh, we're gonna go from a thousand to eleven hundred and that's that.
Right.
Everything we did is the minimalist we could to get started.
I think these will.
I think these will get to the next level.
So phase two, as we've been talking about, there's gonna, I think there's gonna end up being three buckets out of this. This is gonna be, as we're working with the consultant on, we have weekly calls now with him. There's gonna be the health bucket, that's the must haves, other benefits, this would be such as the transportation stipend we've talked about, or educational reimbursement, other benefits like that. And then other non-benefits could be the flexible work schedule, the telecommuting.
Can we even get the electric car charging here?
I think we already did, don't we?
Yeah, I think that's.
That got approved.
That got approved in the last book.
Yeah, so we have organization goal-based free charges.
Yeah, so you get out a fourth bucket.
I said one city among the thirteen.
There's at least one city that does it.
So, right.
Where do I go for this free charging?
San Diego, Campbell.
Oh, come here.
Downstairs.
So we don't have a lot of details on this yet, we're working that out with these weekly calls, but we'll definitely have a lot more details at the September meeting.
We're gonna do the health savings account and the benefit care accounts.
Correct.
And a bunch of stuff like that.
Yes.
It just seems like that happens. I don't know if you've talked to our city about the gym memberships that we.
I did, yeah. Had Jim Lindsay and I had a long conversation. I need to follow up with the HR person, but I have a ton of ideas, a lot that come under the employee goodwill button. But the YMCA membership is, she's gonna put me in contact with the person.
We actually think they made a mistake at the Y, the deal was too good to be true.
Six hundred and seventy-five annual membership.
And it gives them access to all the Ys.
Yes.
True, that I didn't know. Do check, some health insurance policies include health clubs.
Okay. But I don't think ours.
Ours is not. Maybe that's part of this whole phase two.
And the other thing with the health one, and this depends on how you're gonna structure the buckets, is if someone takes their spouse's insurance, what do we give them?
That's definitely in lieu.
And that was brought up in the survey as well, we wanna figure out a way to do that.
Yeah.
Because that's always, I've never got, never got the benefit of that.
So a lot more to fund this phase two at the September meeting. And so in summary, we, with the recommendations today, we'll take this to the September board meeting. We cover many of the, most of the employee inputs as far as the response to the surveys, such as enhancements to the health coverage, time off, compensation study.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Yes.
One of the things that we always had a challenge with, but the way we're talking about now, okay, I'll make the comment, but I think we've solved it. We used to do the COLAs automatically on the corporate year and then three or four months later, we would do the reviews. So you're gonna need to make sure that there's no tie-in, that you have an annual date, whether it's their employment date or an annual date, you're gonna have to figure out, because if you wanna blend it all, you're gonna end up doing it all at one time.
Yeah.
So that's, that'll take a little.
Yeah.
I'm more used to the COLAs on the start of the fiscal year and the merits on your anniversary date.
Right, and if we're not, not doing it, you gotta read a little bit.
We're not doing the COLA that way, yeah.
I think it'll be one. My general sense is gonna be when we're doing our goal setting for the next year. That ideal time is towards the end of the fiscal year, that's when we're getting our goal set, all the metrics.
Don't, don't get yourself overburdened because reviews can take a lot of time.
So this is going to be online, no pay.
But it still takes time.
Yes, it does.
With the employee, make your decisions and all of that.
Right.
So I got your phase one, on your phase two, what does it take to make that happen at the November board meeting instead of December? So that everything can start January first?
The answer will be, we'll talk with Evan.
Okay.
That's all that does.
All right.
We'll shoot for that goal.
Again, I think drawing as much of this to close is a positive message for the employees and it's probably positive for the board too.
And I don't think we're gonna change anything between November, December, or January. The issue is can we get the information together and implement it?
Already the employees saw us kick this stuff off in May. And, and, I don't know. Sounds like we're just.
We're working on our own, Chris.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's thirteen of us.
There shouldn't be.
I think.
We are more bored than employees.
It seemed that way for a while.
I think this is very positive feedback, I think the feedback we've got unanimously is supportive of all the recommendations, but some changes to it, which is, I think, very positive in terms of sending a message to the employees that we will follow.
One other thing I was going to take note of, you have the, are the employees come to all the board meetings?
Yes.
I don't think they need to.
Yeah.
Do they, do you make them come or do they come?
You know, uh, I think it's just a practice, I ask the directors to come.
At that.
I think the directors need to be there to every meeting.
We have junkies in our city.
Yeah.
That were online, that they all, like half of our city does the council meetings.
Online, watching it, the webcast.
Unless, no, no.
Watch the webcast.
Unless it's during the, the negotiations, then they all.
Then you guys are really entertaining.
We do not, we have, we have a representative from departments that are on the agenda. If they are not on the agenda, the department head does not show up.
We do all directors and then for those who are, are presenting or it was their project, even if somebody else is presenting, but it was their.
Yes, then we do, yes.
I actually appreciated that they all were there, but then of late, I started wondering as the group has gotten bigger and bigger and bigger, and then realizing that some of them were just the interns.
Right.
But he's actually, in another way, I thought, well, that's probably pretty good, because his interns have now been exposed to the inner workings.
I think there's a huge value to that, it's almost like.
Well, I think it's great that they are, but I don't want, I don't want them to feel that they are then entitled to the eighty hours or whatever it is of time. That's where I was coming from.
Oh, you mean the unpaid leave?
No, if the management, the management time, yes.
No, the management leave, it essentially becomes, it's paid time off that they can use whenever they want to. So this gets to.
But he, she doesn't want everybody to think they're entitled to it because they come to the board meetings.
Right.
As far as I know, no, nobody on your director level is, is forced to do that.
Because that's what happens, we have people who show up at the, at the council meetings and then they take the comp time.
No, but this is very different. So comp time is actually, it's kind of like you get overtime.
Yeah.
Which you can either take as cash or you can take as comp time. This has no connection to that, this is just, this is essentially one week PTO.
Right, we have, Paul, I, I think we have a hundred and twenty hours per management staff.
Yes.
So they can attend all the council meetings and do, yeah.
But see, they're not tracking it one to one, they just take it whenever they want to.
I know, but some of them get away with none.
I appreciate that I see most of the staff at the board meetings, I really actually do.
I, I, I agree too, yes, but.
But I think that's, otherwise the audience would be half as full. I appreciate that, that they are interested enough to be there and follow along.
We're such a small organization, there's so many interconnections, we're still so near. I think this is where maybe the environment creating culture.
And it gives us the opportunity to thank staff directly when we do the, we thank staff.
It does matter when they're there.
Yep.
So next steps would be, talked about, we'll present any material changes to comp study, we'll, any policies that we need to bring to you before the board meeting, we'll bring it to the September fourth meeting and an update on phase two. And we'll get an update as well as to see if we can move this phase two a little earlier.
Is there an expectation, let's see this, phase three is scheduled for November of twenty twenty? Like, is there an expectation that we'll relook at this in two years?
Certainly comp studies every two years.
No, but I'm, but I'm, just because everybody's probably already starting to get, maybe it's just us because we've seen it so much.
Yeah.
That you're not coming back with phase three in May.
No.
Oh, not overall either in two years.
There's like an expectation that, you know, as part of looking at our competitiveness every two years.
Correct.
We'll do the ranges and we'll reassess that.
Yes.
I think that's a nice thing to clarify.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it'll give us some definitiveness that we're solving this and moving on.
Right, good comment, right.
And then I think it also gives you cover on the backside, because it'll be all new board members, half new board members in two years.
It'd be all new board members.
Because elections happen every two years, things turn over.
Yeah.
You can say, you know, per our system, this is when we review all these things and all of the new board members. Say, oh, good, they've got a system in place.
Howard will always be there, he runs even when he's not supposed to.
Never, never again, because my kids need a, a living father and a mother that's not in jail. She'll kill me if I run.
That's what you're telling people now, huh?
So there's a lot, lock the term out in two years.
It is just, it is the nature of a board of elected officials is we turn over, as mayors come and go, make the appointments, or as we get elected or not elected, none of us are permanent.
There's at least three, at least three, probably four that will be gone.
Did I have to share their home?
Sure. I know in twenty twenty, there's a lot that are gone. This year, what's his name from Morgan Hill?
Steve.
Steve.
He's retired.
Yeah, I bet this is, this is normal, so that's why.
It sounds tummy half the time anyway.
Yeah, you just wanna be able to say, per our policy, this is, we, we review this now, rather than bringing it up in the board's name, why now?
Yeah, I think it's part of twenty twenty, twenty-one budget development, which we're gonna try and do maybe a couple of months earlier, start off the priorities being.
She'll do all your ranges and make it not just ranges, make it review of benefits and compensation.
So I think.
You just change the system.
And one other question, we do have an outside consultant managing our benefits programs and everything, do we not?
Yes.
Correct.
And do you anticipate any change in that?
No, I think as we have to implement this phase two, there's gonna be, we have to see what their capabilities are and so that may be some,
because what's the increased cost with broker?
Yeah, where we started is the very, very beginning, we actually had Tom go out and see Trinat. There were a couple of other ones that we mentioned that were like full-service benefits providers. They're like a external HR and we decided they were not the right answer.
At that point.
At that point, but they had more potential range of options.
Yeah, we're currently using HR to go for payroll and the management benefits.
And this new firm could possibly be a bidder on that boatwork.
This person, this is Claremore partner.
Yeah, they're just a consultant.
They're a consultant, they specialize in small, medium-sized business optimizing benefits from an employer's standpoint. An employee's standpoint, it's like, are you using up old benefits that your employer is providing, so they have.
Sounds like it.
But they won't replace the HR to go.
Right.
But they'll have some contacts in the business to answer that question.
So when their contract comes up for review and, and know that they can or can't meet the new scope, you'll ask them.
Correct, you got it.
I just don't wanna go down a path where there's a huge administrative burden. I mean, there already is right now, and you knew there would be because we're moving the bar a lot.
Yeah.
But, but we don't want managing HR benefit stuff to be twenty-five percent of your job.
No, this is just the planning and design, that's what requires our time, but once we put a system in place.
And, and you're really looking for it in terms of getting the right staff?
Yeah.
I mean, it's really, you're pushers to get the right staff.
Retaining and attracting.
So we've lost three people?
Stephanie's last day was last Friday.
Last Friday.
She went to San Jose.
Okay.
Dennis DeSherni.
What did Stephanie do? She actually was promoted with City of San Jose and was close to.
Not, not their main manager, just the.
The city, the finance department, yeah.
She got a big, big job.
Yeah. Showtime to have this conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
At least it wasn't one of our own cities that stole her.
Yeah, okay, but three, so when you say we lost three.
Lost Tom and Dennis and Stephanie.
And Alan left us, so.
Oh, yeah.
Four people.
Four people have left.
Four people have left since we started.
So, so out of the original fifteen or twenty, that's a big percentage.
Yeah, this is.
That's actually still not bad, I mean, in the startup phases of companies, things churn a lot.
Have we had some new people?
You didn't count all those interns.
Better people left, huh? Better people.
That's true, yeah, we didn't, we didn't count the interns, yeah.
Did we get that, that one woman, the duplicate of the trophy?
I see some staff.
Yeah, I was worried.
Yeah.
She seemed very surprised, but all of us who sit on our side are like.
Of course, gotta do it.
All right, so move on, any other staff or?
Just real quick, this would just be a proposed agenda, maybe you can pass it around, thank you. This is the proposed agenda for the September fourth meeting. So we'll, again, bring up this topic, compensation benefits. I also have tentatively a presentation by Bank of America on investment strategies. As the cash balance has grown, Bank of America and things like that are now reaching out. We'll bring to you the recommended operating budget. We'll also have, we've talked about the twenty million dollar line of credit, we'll get that finalized at the September meeting. Also, we're looking at options for, as Chris mentioned, the office expansion, we'll bring that lease to you as well, as well as the, how we came up to that choice and look at the third quarter financials as well as.
Why do you keep track of all this?
Are we going to have a discussion about the potentially permanent housing solution?
It's a little. Not right now, this, we're looking at the lease being at least four years.
We're stuck till twenty twenty-one at least.
Here is my general thought process, which is we have sort of a reserve policy and why do we have reserves? And one of the reasons might be that at some point, we're gonna come up with a permanent plan, so it's sort of that thought.
Okay.
And it's, you're right, it's not, I'll be long gone.
Yeah.
Not, he's gonna get reelected forever in Los Angeles, he's got a clean shot, sort of pastor.
Fortunately, I do not.
But others do not.
I'm turned out.
Right.
That's right, you're the other one, I knew it was somebody else leaving, it's you.
So, but it, it's an interesting sort of thought, because it is on the four, five-year time horizon, but there may be a point where we wanna make that decision and now would be the time to say part of our reserves is for this and we're gonna throw it by this much per year.
That's a stupid.
All right.
You have space on here, that's why I asked the question.
All right.
When you say permanent, are you saying build, buy a building?
Yeah.
Or build one with all-electric and, you know, the stuff, I, I haven't heard the latest from Dawn about what they're doing in Los Altos Hills in their library.
But let me give the weird example, like, let's say this building came up on the market, right?
Would we buy it?
Would we buy it? And it would be part of our investment, because if, you know, it would be an investment, would we own the whole third floor then and move out?
This is deja vu all over again. Get this in Riverside, we own three floors of the Bank Wells Fargo building, six-story building, and we bought the building for exactly that.
Yeah, okay.
It's like, we aren't going anywhere, but the muni is different, muni, it's monopoly service.
Right, right.
Same thing, a lease, seven-year lease, there's a tenancy in common, they wanted out, bought it. So, yeah, I think it's interesting to put that in and maybe I think the reserve, setting aside some of the reserves.
But it just, we're gonna have this lease discussion, I'm just wondering if there's a beginning discussion for that thought process, because that will take years forever to come around, a good time to lease it off.
And buy a building, that's wasted on the next downturn.
Yes.
Yeah, when the owner of this building is going bankrupt, you can get it cheap.
Well, and I'll also say that the library, the San Clara County Library went with that plan and I think it's worked out great for them. They were leasing a building and were able to purchase another building in Campbell, basically for what they were paying in rent. And now they're actually, and they bought a little bit more than, than they needed because they're already finding a need to expand. So.
Yeah.
I mean, I would always keep your eyes open for that kind of.
But part of it is, is as the finance committee, we have to enable them to have.
No, no, I, I was, I should be on the record saying that somewhere earlier.
You were on the live.
Keep, keep, keep your eyes open.
Yeah.
All right. Land's not getting any cheaper.
Not making any more of it.
Or not making.
Not to.
Well, unless you live down in Big Sur.
Or Hawaii.
Every Gulf Coast closes.
Did you see that, Ellen?
There you go.
Where did, God, I didn't remember, we're the Bay Area, I just, my daughter's moving to Baltimore. They have ten thousand vacant houses in a city with six hundred thousand people. And that's after the city spent the last fifteen years buying and condemning and tearing down.
I have two wonderful.
There's that much exit just from Baltimore.
Baltimore is now growing, but Baltimore was near a million. And during the Civil War, Baltimore was the largest city in the South.